I would like to call to order the April 18th meeting of the Village Cold Springs zoning Board of Appeals. I'm Aaron Wolf, I'm the Chair, and we also have tonight Eric Worth, Donald McDonald, John Martin, and Grace Low, our other board members. And we've got our Board Secretary, Michael Mel, and tonight we have our Village Attorney, John First, who's going to assist us with the public hearing for 21 Parsonage Street. For those of you who may not be familiar with the zoning board, we have two main roles in the Village. We grant or deny variances to the code when requested by property owners. That's the bulk of our work. And the zoning board is also authorized to interpret the Village zoning code if there's a subjective difference of opinion about the code between the department and property owner, and we almost never do that. And we're not doing that tonight. So, on tonight's agenda, we have three things. We've got a public hearing for 21 Parsonage Street for several variances required to permit construction of a single-family home in the R1 District. We have a public hearing for 3 Rock Street for variance to the minimum dwelling size in the R3 District. And we have a workshop for 3 Furnace Street for an application for a variance for the maximum fence height in the R1 District. I think I had 3 Rock Street first on the agenda, but I think it would be a good idea to handle 21 Parsonage first if the board is okay with that.
It's fine.
And do any of the applicants have any concerns about that change?
No objection.
So, let's start with then the 21 Parsonage Street public hearing. And I want to start by explaining how the public hearing is going to work and what our order of operations is for tonight. So, we're not going to make a decision on the application tonight, and the primary reason is because we need to wait for the county to acknowledge that they have been notified and that they don't have an interest in the application, or for 30 days to pass since they were notified on April 9th. This is a state code requirement because of the property's location near County Highway 301. So, if the county does not acknowledge, then we are required to wait the 30 days, which makes the earliest voting date for this on May, our meeting at May 16th. So, a couple of other things that have come up during our past workshops, I think we've had two workshops for this project already. I want to point out that during discussion, it might seem like board or the board or individual members are looking for ways to support or reject the project, and I want to make clear that that's an assumption that you probably don't want to make. What we're doing is building our understanding of the project and the application and public opinion on that. So, keep that in mind, please. So, what we're going to do is I'm going to explain the rest of the way the discussion is going to flow, and then we're going to start. So, we're going to double-check that the application is complete, and that notifications have been sent to the neighbors, and the sign has been up. Then, I would like for the ZBA to have a discussion about the legal status of the lot for zoning purposes, so that we're all clear on the circumstances that bring the applicant here tonight and how the code applies to this lot. Next, we're going to open the public hearing. The applicant is going to present the application to the board and the public. Once the presentation is complete, the board will address questions to the applicant. And then, after that, we'll open the public comment period, and the public will be able to comment in an organized way, so that everybody can hear the answers, and everyone has a chance to get their questions out. Depending on how long this goes, we might not get to everybody tonight, but keep in mind that this is going to be open for at least two more meetings, so there's going to be plenty of time for in-person comment and for written comment to the board. Let's see. And it is also possible that the ZBA will hold a closed meeting with our Village Attorney either tonight after this portion of the meeting, or at another date to discuss legal matters. It's not going to be a session where we are receiving new evidence, or hearing witnesses, and we won't be making any decisions if we do that during those meetings. We'll just be getting clarification about the legal concerns for the application. Okay. Everybody, anybody have any questions about that on the board before we jump in, or suggestions?
No.
Okay, great. So, we want to start with the legal status of the lot for zoning purposes. It's a little bit confusing. Before I get into that, I want to review the responses that we received from the HDRB, the Historic Review Board, and from the Planning Board. At our last workshop, we asked them to make comment on the application, and our general interest was to make sure that we would not, should we grant any variances, set up a situation that could not be handled by either of those two boards. So, the HDRB told us they have not received an application for this project. They did have one workshop on it. They made no findings or conclusions. I think there was a statement at our last workshop that the HDRB had thought, had seen no historic value in the barn, but Al Ziegulinski, the Chair of the Board, says that that statement is incorrect, and that they have not yet formed any opinion at all on the historic value of the barn. They declined to offer an opinion on that, and whether the barn itself has historic value, and also whether the location of the barn is in the historic comportment. So, basically, we're at zero with the HDRB. He did, of course, mention that it's in the local historic district, and that it, as such, it's subject to a high bar for demolition and modification.
That's a good question.
Sure.
Do they have a timetable for making some determinations about that, or recommendations?
Well, I think they're waiting for, to see what happens here, and then they would start their regular process. But they have not received a complete application yet. So, while it might seem to be a foregone conclusion that the old rickety barn is going to go away quickly, that's completely up to the HDRB, and they haven't started that process yet. We also requested an opinion from planning, and in an email from the Chair, Matt Francisco, who's here, he informed the board, the ZBA, that they will be essentially not providing an opinion to us, because first, they only had three people there, and the two of the board members felt strongly that they did not want to infer support or approval of the application or any board alignment. Matt also pointed out that there was a previous informal review where the applicant attended, and there was, I don't know, a consensus or an idea that reducing the nonconformity of the project would be desired from the planning board's point of view. I watched the meeting where the planning board decided not to reply, and I want to make a couple of comments about that. First, I wanted to clear up a misunderstanding. It was stated a couple of times in that meeting that we did not have a complete application when we referred it to the planning board for this review. We do have a complete application, and I think the confusion that came about from that is that there was no narrative attached to the application about the five factors that the ZBA considers when we're granting area variances. Now, we review the area, we review the five factors at our public hearings. Some applicants come with a completely drawn-out narrative, others do not. They come with something, or more frequently, nothing. But we always review them all at the meeting, and we don't really consider that necessary to have in hand before we schedule a public hearing. So, that is why it might have seemed that we didn't have a complete application. There were a couple of other things there that I wanted to comment on. There was a concern that by granting variances, this would be a legislative action. There's been some discussion with our Village Attorney, who says that this is not a legislative action. The board is, you know, we're welcome to discuss that if we want, when we get into it. There were also a couple of suggestions that, one was that if variances were to be granted, that restriction be placed, so that the property could not be enlarged in the future, and no accessory structures could be added. And additionally, that, there was another comment, that the neighbors have enjoyed the assurance of the merger. And what that means is, we'll get into it in a little bit, but it has to do with the way these two non-conforming lots came to be technically merged for zoning purposes. And I think that's one way to look at why it's not, why the lot does not yet have a structure on it. The other one is that nobody has ever applied for variances before for building on this lot, as far as we've been able to determine. Okay, this is far more, much more talking than I normally do at these hearings, but it's going to continue a little bit longer. So, a little bit about this application and why it's more complicated than the normal applications we see. First, we're considering variances to allow a new building on a non-conforming lot. And this lot is non-conforming in its size, its dimensions and area. Because of that, it's going to require at least the one variance. In addition, the application that we have places the building in a spot on the lot where it triggers many more variances that are needed in order to build a lot. Let's see. So, the pre-existing non-conforming lot was created prior, so this lot, the 21 Parsonage, is a pre-existing non-conforming lot created prior to the adoption of the Village zoning code in 1967. And at that time, it was owned, 36 Pine and 21 Parsonage were owned by the same owner. So, when the zoning code came into effect in 1967, the lot at 21 Parsonage lost any kind of grandfathered status and protections that it had, that it would have had if it had been a separate ownership. And this is what we're talking about when we say that it's a merged lot. It no longer has, it doesn't qualify to be a pre-existing lot anymore, or pre-existing, it doesn't get the benefits of being a pre-existing non-conforming lot because it has a new owner. So, there, at our last workshop, at the planning board reviews of this, and in discussion with our Village Attorney, there has been some discussion about the legal status of the lot. And I want to lay out where the current, and I would imagine, binding, finding or final understanding is. And that is that the applicant, who owns the lot, is certainly apply, you know, allowed to apply for variances that would be required to build on the lot. They are not applying for an interpretation of the merger clause, and they are not stating that the lot was ever officially subdivided at any time. So, we're looking at the variances in order to make this buildable. If variances are granted, then the lot becomes a conforming lot under the Village Code. And we can go into that further if the board wants to. And I would encourage anybody who has questions, that we're going to, that we ask those of John right now, so that we're all on the same page with regard to that as we get into the variances. Also, another reason why this is complicated is because there are past legal cases against the Village that dealt with merger lots, and the ZBA certainly wants to understand the implications of our decision with regard to those, as well as how our decision might affect similar properties in the future. And as I stated before, we might discuss this in a closed meeting with our attorney if we need to. Okay. Does anyone on the board want to go into any of those complications or issues that are raised to the Village Attorney? We can, of course, do it later, but I think it would be helpful for us to get on the same page as we go into the public hearing part of the meeting.
Well, I guess I'll ask a question. So, just to zero in, not to spend a lot of time. You have, you have two lots.
Correct.
You've got the original lot and the unbilled, the lot with no building on it.
Yep.
And...
A lot with no house on it.
And at some point between, at some point before zoning was enacted, a line was drawn that basically divided the lot into two lots.
Yes, I believe in the 20s, it might have been as long ago as the 1920s.
All right. And so, now we go, come to, zoning code was enacted in the Village, and the lots were under the same ownership.
Correct.
Therefore, the merger, what we call the merger clause makes, doesn't take the line, it doesn't take the...
Doesn't erase the line.
It doesn't erase the line. There's, it's still, the line is still...
As of the county records, there's still two tax parcels.
So, that's the difference between this lot and say, if I have a lot now, and I want to take and put a line down the middle of my backyard, and say, oh, I got two lots.
Right.
The difference is that I'm doing it after zoning code was enacted.
So, you would have to go before the planning board and try to obtain planning board approval. And if it was, if you were trying to create a substandard lot, the planning board would then have to refer to you guys for, from variances. So, back in the 20s, back in the 60s, how they created lots is they just got a map out and said, these are the lots we want to create, and they just filed the map with the county clerk's office. That's how you subdivided property back then. There was no planning involved. There was no looking at traffic, noise, aesthetics, community character.
There wasn't even a planning board, there wasn't any one appeal, so it was just a board and a mayor.
Yes, and probably some money.
Right. And so, they just created lots.
Yes.
And you could make a lot as big or as small as you want. There wasn't any regulations on it.
In Cold Spring, no, there weren't any regulations at that time.
Until 1967, when zoning came in.
Correct.
So, this clause that we're talking about is one to deal with these lots that came in that, and made a distinction between ones that were held separately...
Right. So, if this lot was held separately at the time in 1968, they wouldn't need any variances, or they would need limited variances. They would only need a couple of variances for the setbacks for the structure. But that's not the case, since it was owned by the same person in 1968, they lose those protections.
Right.
Because of the merger clause. So, they don't have the grandfather status, they've never disputed that. They haven't really raised it as an issue, they, I think they've even acknowledged it was owned by the same person to the 80s. So, that's not an issue. The issue is whether this substandard lot is buildable in the sense that will the board grant the numerous variances that are being requested.
Well, why do we call it a merger clause when there's not, the word merge isn't even in the...
I know, and they...
It's not even in the language of the section.
That's, that's just what, that's just, I guess, people in the business, that's what we call it, and maybe it's confusing, and maybe I should have characterized it differently, because I think it might have led to some confusion, and I apologize for that. But they call it a merger clause because the lots merge for zoning purposes, even though they're still separate lots, still separate tax lots, they've essentially merged for zoning purposes. So, you still have a substandard lot, and they have the right to seek the variances. Now, whether they're granted or not, to make that substandard lot buildable, that's up to you guys. You're the lucky ones to figure that out.
The confusing part is you say the lots were merged for zoning purposes. So, when I think of something merged, I see Lot A, Lot B, and I see them merged, and I see one lot.
Right.
That's what I think merge, merge definition is two things merged to one.
And again, maybe it's a mischaracterization.
You say that, and so that's why I keep going off the rails.
So, let's not use the word merge. Let's just say that this is, this is a substandard lot that lost its grandfather protections because it was owned by the same person that owned an adjoining lot. We won't use the M-word.
So, in other words... So, in Congress today, they have been not using the F-word, so...
I didn't even know that.
So, in other words, before and after, you have two lots, and you still have two lots.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
But the problem is that one lot that they're trying to build on is not buildable.
Right.
Unless these variances are granted.
Would it have made a difference if, after those two lots were sort of divided back in 1920, where they, and say they sold to two different individuals, I mean, the one owner at the time sold it to two, and those two individuals then sold it back to a single owner to get both back? Would that have made a difference?
Your code is kind of weird, because it says at the time of zoning in 1960.
So, that's the...
So, you have to take a snapshot of that picture, and whatever it is, and whatever it was before, doesn't matter. Whatever happens after, it doesn't matter.
Right.
What was like in 1968, and according to all indications, in 1968, it was owned by the same person.
Right.
And that's what it is. It is kind of unique in your code that it says at that time. And it's not just, you know, I have, a lot of municipalities are struggling with this, because it seems to be a popular issue, trying to build on substandard lots, and pre-existing non-conforming substandard lots. I've had this issue come up in two other municipalities in the last couple of weeks. And it's a confusing issue.
Have you looked at any of the neighboring, immediately neighboring lots in that area to see, some of them are smaller in size, square footage?
Yes, I believe the applicant had provided an aerial showing the sizes of some of the neighboring lots, and maybe he can probably expand upon that during the public hearing for the benefit of the public, as well as you guys.
So, let's remember that question to ask about those other lots and how they got so small.
And what their status was back at the time the code was set, and what it is currently.
Right. I don't know if the applicant has all that information, but yeah, how they were created, my guess is a lot of them were probably pre-existing prior to zoning. It was an old village, so...
It's something to keep in mind when you talk about the character and neighborhood.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, so, let's open our public hearing, and I want to start by reading the list of variances that we're talking about here, so that everybody knows, without reading the entire notice. So, the application is by Samuel Bro, our applicant, for the following variances from requirements set forth in the Village zoning code, in order to permit construction of a single-family dwelling on a substandard lot. So, first is, we have a 33,000, 3, sorry, 3,360 square foot lot, when the code requires a 7,500 square foot lot. A variance to permit one off-street parking spot when two are required, or allowing it to, variance requested to allow a dwelling on a lot with a width of 48 feet, when the code requires 75. To allow, allow a lot depth of 70 feet when 75 is required. To permit a front yard setback of 2.2 feet for the dwelling, when the code requires 25 feet. To permit one side yard for the proposed dwelling to be 1.5 feet, when code requires 10 feet. And to permit a dwelling on a lot with a 48 by 50 foot square, when the code requires at least a 50 foot by 50 foot square. Okay, the last one is, might be a little confusing to those not familiar with the zoning code, but it says you have to be able to fit a square that's 50 by 50 on your lot, or it's too small. And the point of that is so that all of the narrow lots that we all live in cannot be created anymore. But in this case, that is pretty close, actually, to the existing size, so it's only 50 feet. All right, so, let's open the public hearing and have the applicant come and present the case to us, and to the public. So, if the public would like to see any thing that's being discussed or shown to the board, let us know, and we will pass it around, and we might take a break after this section, so everybody can come up and look at the materials.
Right. We do have up here the site plan, as well as some of the aerials, which were mentioned briefly, so there are additional copies there. I have a survey and some plans that we can also provide. So, my name is Luke Kilford. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Samuel Bro, in order to present his application to this board as discussed for the seven, the seven variances from the Village Code. And what we're dealing with here is a pre-existing non-conforming lot has been discussed. On the lot, as it sits today, there is a barn. That barn has been there, as far as we can tell, from, it appears on a map from 1912, it's been in that same location. Mr. Bro is attempting to convert that structure into a single-family home.
Oh, right. Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you. I jumped one of my bullet points, which is to double-check that the application is complete and review the, review the mailing list.
Excuse me, Adam. Could we ask the applicants to stand next to John, so that the video can show them? Thank you.
And also the affidavit for the sign posted in the...
Do you guys have that?
Yeah, the affidavit, the sign.
It went by, I mean, I can attest that the sign, it went by a couple of times, the sign's there.
Right. And I believe because the sign has to be there throughout the whole process, that I would posit that that application, that affidavit can be submitted at the end, that it has remained through the whole process.
Let's continue, continue hearing.
That, I'll leave that to John, to the...
Yeah, John, does that look for you?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, if one of the board members says they saw it up.
No, I saw it.
Okay, so that's fine. But I would actually just submit, send an affidavit that you posted it.
Yes, sir.
And then, at the end, you can submit an affidavit when you took it down.
Okay. Certainly do that.
But you don't have to submit it tonight.
Okay.
With regards to the sign, it continues to stay up until the hearing.
That's right. So, the sign needs to stay up until we're all done with the hearing sometime in May, All right. You've turned in the receipts, and they were here on this table a moment ago, so they're somewhere very...
They are.
John has. We're not used to having an attorney here at our hearings.
The mailings were completed. Additionally, a notice was hand-delivered to the Village of Nelsonville, and I believe on an email with you, Mr. Wolf, Jeff did confirm that the Village did receive that.
Jeff, the Village Cork spoke to the Nelsonville Cork and confirmed that they...
Just to make sure that email gets in the record, like in his file, so that we have it.
Okay. So, shall we continue?
Sure.
Okay.
So, as I stated, this is, the property's located in the R1 District, as you've already gone through. It is a 3,366 square foot lot with a, with a 48 feet and a depth of 70 feet. In addition, so that does require the area variance for the entire lot. It requires the depth and the width variances as well, where the depth is required to be 75 feet and the width the same. In addition, because of the barn that's existing, and the potential historic value of that barn and/or that location, Mr. Bro has, through discussions, determined that he would like to use that barn as a footprint to build, to convert to a single-family home. So, based on whatever outcome there is with the Historic Review Board and this board, he would, there is no foundation for that barn, so it will have to be lifted, a foundation will have to be provided, it will have to be moved in some way, shape, or form, but to put it back to that location to try to use it as much as possible would, would be his ideal. If that's not possible, and the Historic Review Board determines that, then it would be... then it would be to, to build a new structure in that place. The goal here would be to convert this lot that is, they, otherwise vacant from the barn. Barn, as we've talked to the neighbors, the lot's untended. The barn is overrun with the skunks deemed to find it as a, a fit place to, to inhabit. So there would be a benefit to the neighborhood in, you know, adding a use to this property. I would like to, we talked a bit about the merger provision and Mr. McDonald, I appreciate your question because it went to a lot of what I was going to bring out as well. And just mentioning, I'd like to, for the record, read in the, which would be section one thirty-four dash nineteen L, which states that existing non-conforming lots, a lot in any district that was under separate ownership from all adjoining lots on the effective date of this chapter, and which has a total lot area, lot width, or lot depth less than otherwise required herein, may be used and developed in conformity with all other applicable regulations in its district, subject to grand site plan approval. So that provision, as you pointed out, does not have the word merger in it. So we do have a, a separate lot. And it does however lose, admittedly lose its non-conforming, its pre-existing non-conforming status, which is why we are here seeking the vary, the area depth and width variances. I think it's important to, I think it's important to, to talk a little bit about the merger and how it comes to be. When you have a provision in a code that's adopted that, that basically prevents an owner of the property from using the property for any benefit, we do have to look at the Fifth Amendment and the takings clause in there. So this issue was presented. There was a Supreme Court of the United States case in which the state of Wisconsin and the individual mer, so it's mer versus Wisconsin. And the, the Supreme Court did say in certain specific circumstances, a merger provision is not deemed to take it. I think it's important though that our Court of Appeals in New York points out that since zoning regulations are derogation of a common law, they must be strictly construed against the municipality which has enacted them. And any ambiguity in the language must be, must be resolved in favor of the property owner. And also more locally in the Second Department, in Incorporated Village of Oldfield, the Hickey, they state, court will not read into zoning ordinances provisions that are not expressly set forth therein. So from that standpoint, I think it further enforces the fact that this is not merged. It is a, a separate lot. It does exist in its own, it just does need the variances.
Since you run that point, if I could just interrupt, interrupt a second.
Sure.
Is that deemed to be when the code and the law is passed that the person should not have, there shouldn't be a taking of what that person was currently owning that lot? Whereas in this case, was the current owner, applicant before us, did they own the lot at that time? Or it was transferred to him subsequently, they took on notice that the lot was non-conforming? And potentially non-buildable?
I think there's certainly the fact that, there is notice that the, the lot is non-conforming. And I, I certainly understand that.
Would those facts change from what that decision?
I, I don't think they change the decision. I think what's important is that the language in this code does not merge the lots. And that, that was all I was getting to, and Mr. McDonald actually elicited that initially, that the lots are not merged. This is, this is a, a lot. Whether it's buildable because it is substandard is up to, you know, that determination is why we're here.
But it's a risk when a person buys it?
It, it is certainly a risk. That's, that is true.
But it's a risk not because of any merger issue, it's a risk because of the, the amount of variance is required to make it into a, to build what they want to build?
Well, when there, when there's a lot that is, when there's a lot that is separate, and, and then there's a presumption that it is a separate lot to be considered for, for building. You also look at the, you know, you know, you look at the rest of the neighborhood and see what is, you know, what the neighborhood looks like and, and how this project would conform with the rest of the neighborhood. So I think what, what makes this property unique is, you know, this has, this merger did take place in the twenties. It's, or this, I'm sorry, this division, the merger wasn't until later. This division did take place in the twenties and it's been treated at, as separate. And these lots have been treated as separate since that time, for almost a hundred years they've been treated as, as separate lots. Separate taxes have been paid on them. It appears, you know, separate and distinct to the public. The neighborhood in which it's located has a lot of similar lots of this size. There is a building on it already. You know, the barn and the lot as it exists today is certainly not a benefit to the, to the neighborhood. I think some of the neighbors are here today. I'll let them speak to that more because they, we did have a meeting with some of the neighbors and they expressed their thoughts and concerns as well. And I know that they certainly will, will discuss it more today. So from that standpoint, I think that's the application we're putting forth today to the board. We are requesting the seven variances as stated. So I'd like to kind of just run through the, the variances now with the.
Would it make sense to, to talk about the building and what the plans are for the lot at this point?
Sure.
Or after you go through the variances?
Whatever you prefer.
The board have any preference? Maybe it would help the public understand what we're talking about.
Sure.
So why don't we do that first?
Yeah, and I, I think that is, you know, in conversations with the neighbors, that is certainly a, a concern. You know, everybody wants to know what's going to happen here, what's going to be built. So the plans are currently to build a, or the plan is to build a, or to convert into a single-family residence. It would be a one-bedroom house. The structure will stay essentially the same size. It's about six hundred square feet. Not going to change the footprint much. And there will be a, a parking space off to the side. The rear, the proposal is for the rear of the lot to remain in its natural condition with plantings and landscaped. They also discussed the, the fact of using some sort of impervious surface for the, for the parking. So there won't be any increase in the impervious surface on, on the property. The intent of the, the homeowner is to have his, he's, he's getting married this spring and that they will use this house for family to visit. Neither one of, neither the homeowner nor his fiancee, his family live locally. They intend to start a family and to have the parents visit. And that, the house would ideally be used for that. It, the other option would be a, a long-term rental. I know there has been a lot of discussion about possibility of an Airbnb because of, I think, the size. It's, you know, it's not really a family home. And so that's a concern of, I think of the board and the community at large. And Mr. Bro has stated that that is not his intended use for the property. And certainly, as you know, the board does have authority to place the, to prevent such a use. So that is, that's the intention with, with the property. That's the intended plan. Would you like any more on that?
I don't know, maybe you, a little more description about the building and the size of the building and which way it faces and, and the parking, interested in the parking and the deck also.
So the, the building will, in, as we've designed it, be exactly the same footprint height, same eaves, same pitch of the roof. It does require a foundation. It does require some windows, which are probably the most noticeable feature on the property. For historic consideration, we have designed it with shutters that close over the windows that face Parsons Street so that when the shutters are closed from the Parsons Street, it looks essentially like it looks right now. The siding would be vertical slats of wood like it has right now. Ideally, we're using as much as we can salvage from the current barn. The entrance would be on the Pine Street side of the building, near the back. The only addition to the footprint is a chimney for a fireplace on the first floor. We've spoken about a metal roof, but that's up for historic consideration as well. We are, we added a porch, a non-covered porch to the side for the entrance. And beside that, a gravel parking spot. But it, you know, if you looked at the building right now and essentially added windows and cleaned it up, put a foundation on it, and hooked it up to the water and electricity, that's what we're trying to do.
Is there anything else you'd like to, to tell us about before we get into our questions? Anything else to present?
I was just going to talk through the five factors.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Do you want to do that or if you'd like to ask questions first?
We'd like for you to complete your presentation.
Sure. So as we talked about, we are looking for seven variances. We, we are talking about a side yard variance, a front yard variance, variance for one parking spot where two are required, variance in width, depth, area, and then the fifty by fifty square. So basically, you know, we're looking at the project as a whole and want to consider the benefit to the, the property owner versus any detriment to the community. And in this instance, I would, you know, posit that there is a benefit to the community in, in having this property cared for and, and be useful. So for the, the side yard variance, the, the side yard would be, would be one and a half feet where ten is required. And in looking at that, you know, considering whether there's any sort of undesirable change in the neighborhood, or any undesirable change to the property, that's, it is a common occurrence throughout the neighborhood. You can see that Thirty-Six Pine Street right next door has essentially no side yard. Property right on the other corner on, actually, two of the four properties on that corner on Pine Street are all essentially right on the property lines. We're very close there too. I'm sorry, so maybe Thirty-Six Pine, the one on the corner of Pine and Parsonage to the south of that. And then over on, on Pine, there's another one with virtually no side yards. So the side yard setback, throughout the neighborhood, there are a lot of narrow lots. There are very limited side yard setbacks. So the next question is, is there another means of achieving this? Or any other means that's feasible for achieving the desired outcome? And certainly there are, as you, you can see on the drawing, and we do have one that's, you could, you could build this property, or you could knock down this barn and build a, a single-family house in the middle of the lot where there would be no side yard setback required. The benefit, in, in our opinion, is that putting the property at the front, putting the structure at the front of the property where it exists does have some historic significance. And putting aesthetically and visually, moving the, the house into the middle of the property in order to achieve the setbacks, we actually move it closer to Thirty-Six Pine Street. Yeah, Thirty-Six Pine and Mrs. Baltidge's property, which is the next one on Parsonage, actually sits a little, has a wider side yard. So looking at the three properties together from the street, having it on this side yard, closer to this side yard actually is, is visually and spatially more consistent with the neighborhood. Putting it in the middle would move it much, much closer to Thirty-Six Pine and would be more of a encroachment on, on that property. As far as the variance is substantial, yes, this variance is certainly from ten to, down to one and a half. Essentially is a, is a substantial variance. But again, we believe that the historical aspect and the, the visual with the neighborhood is, does outweigh the subs, the substantiality of, of that variance. You know, when you're talking about whether it's substantial or not, it's just not, it's not just a mathematical equation here. It's when we're looking at the project as a whole and the community as a whole, is this variance substantial in this instance? And so I, I think from that, from that standpoint, while it is mathematically substantial, there are the limiting factors in that. Is there any adverse or physical, any adverse environment, physical or environmental change as a result of that? I would say no, you know, this is, we're not creating any additional runoff. We're not creating any additional impervious surfaces. So from an environmental standpoint, a physical standpoint, there is no change to the neighborhood. It will have, there will be a single-family home instead of a barn that's not currently used. So there is a minimal traffic impact, I suppose. But that's, you know, it being a, a one-bedroom home, you're looking at a very minimal impact from that standpoint as well. And, you know, was the, was the self-created? And again, this is, it's been in existence for nearly a hundred years in this, this location. We're simply looking to achieve, to convert this into a single-family home. So the side yard setback in and of itself is not a, not a self-created one. Because again, the, the nature of the building and the neighborhood. We can, we can kind of talk about the front yard. I would essentially have the same arguments on, on all five factors. When you do look at the, the rest of the neighborhood, this property's front yard being two point two feet instead of the twenty-five feet is again substantial. And, but the rest of the neighborhood, there are very few properties that are actually twenty-five feet setback. And I think it would be, most of the properties do sit far closer to, to the street. You know, I don't know if they're five feet or ten feet, but they are far closer, not, you know, not two point two. But the, and to be consistent with the neighborhood, I think a, something far closer than the twenty-five feet is, is certainly appropriate and desirable. Otherwise, yes, of cour, there is, as we stated, a feasible, another feasible means for achieving this goal. It would be to put the prop, the house right in the middle of the property. That wouldn't require the, the variances. You know, by doing that, we could eliminate, eliminate four, three of the, you know, three of the variances by moving the property, I'm sorry, two of the variances by moving the property right to the middle of, of the lot. And certainly something that if, that, that could be done. Although we do think that there is a historical and aesthetic value to the, to the location of the property. We then have the parking. Again, we have, there's no undesirable change to the neighborhood. Is there another feasible means? Yes, we could put a second, a second car there, a second parking space there. If we are to meet the other, the other requirements, there would be two parking spots right across the, the front of the property, which again would not be aesthetically pleasing to, to the neighborhood. You wouldn't be able to do two straight back, I don't believe, without really encroaching on Thirty, Thirty-Six Pine. You know, as, as it sits now, the, the parking space is about nine feet from, from the property. It's six feet from the property line at Thirty-Six Pine and about nine feet from the, from the house. So to put a second parking spot would, you know, run the, the full length of the house there. But if you had to do two across the front, it would, you'd really encroach on, on Thirty-Six Pine by meeting the other, the other setbacks. Parking, is it substantial? There is, you know, we're asking for one instead of two, so it is substantial, you know, somewhat substantial in that sense. But again, this is a one-bedroom home. The intended use will be for the downtown guests of the applicant. And they would, you know, generally have one rental car for use. So it, there wouldn't be a lot of need for a second parking spot under that circumstance. If it is rented out as a, you know, as a long-term rental, then yes, it's, it's feasible that one family would have two, two cars. So, but I think the, the fact that the parking area won't be, won't be impervious and, you know, that there's no resulting negative environmental impact on it. and, you know, that there's no resulting negative environmental impact on it. So the width of the lot, again, I don't believe there's any undesirable change in the neighborhood because if you look at the overlay that I've provided, that shows the properties, you'll see that many, a large number of these lots are narrower than required by the code. And similarly with the depth, a large number of them are, are not as deep as the code requires. We can talk about area with that as well. And you'll see, I've indicated through, through the multiple listing service, they provide a realist which takes all the town codes, tax maps, and puts the, or takes all the town tax information and puts it, makes it available. So these numbers are taken from those tax maps. And when you look at the square footages in the property around, you know, this is a thirty-three hundred, thirty-three sixty-six square foot property. You know, Thirty-Six Pine is thirty-seven seventy. The next one over on Pine is thirty-five eighty-eight, thirty-six sixty-seven. Mrs. Voltige's property is ninety-one thirty-three, so that obviously is, is above the limit. But that is the only property in the immediate area that is larger than seventy-five hundred square feet. All the other properties are fairly close to, to the size of this property. So it is consistent with, with the neighborhood. When we're talking about the width, the depth, the width, depth, and area, there is no other feasible means to achieve that. This lot is what it is without, you know, without purchasing from Mrs. Voltige and leaving her property somehow conforming. I don't even think that would result in enough, in enough square footage here anyway. So there is no other feasible means to achieve the goal in that instance. The variances here, again, from a mathematical standpoint, they are substantial. You're talking fifty percent or greater than fifty percent. But from a community standpoint, they're consistent. So, you know, looking at the substantiality when, with the whole project and with the community, it's not, it, I would say it's not substantial because this is how the community was set up. Although it was, you know, somebody decided to draw a line there in nineteen-twenty, it's actually fairly consistent with the rest of the immediate neighborhood. And so there wasn't, there wasn't an official plan, but it seems that there was some sort of a plan in place. The area and the width of the area, I, again, I think because of the fact that the rest of the neighborhood is, is like this, there's no adverse physical or environmental impact on the neighborhood. And, and again, with the self-creation, this is something that was certainly created many years ago and has existed like this, has existed to the public like this. You know, Chairman Wolfman made a point earlier that he believed, or some, that he believed, that somebody had stated that the neighbors had relied on the merger of the two lots. And certainly the neighbors who choose to speak will be speaking. But I don't know that that's, that's accurate. I don't, I don't know that many people knew of the merger provision and the fact that this was, that that was a possibility. But certainly from what I've heard around in speaking to people on, you know, on Pine and on Parsonage that are here or not here, you know, this, it was always believed that this was a separate individual lot. I think having, in conclusion, essentially, the, having a single-family residential home in this neighborhood is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood where a barn is not. And, you know, to maximize the, the use of the property for the owner is certainly something we look to consider without any detriment to the community. And I do think that having a residential home here is, is a better outcome than, you know, something else that could be there. If it was, you know, if somebody were to have storage sheds on there and things like that, you know, if this, somebody using that barn for storage and coming in and out and using it for its purpose that it is, I, I think that a single-family residential home is certainly more consistent and desirable with the neighborhood. Certainly there will be people to speak to that.
Okay, just to clarify your comment about what I said. That came from, I think Stephanie at the planning board meeting. So if you want to, the comment about the neighbors enjoying the merger clause or enjoying the benefits of the merger or being assured that the property was there because of the merger clause.
It might have been sessions for me, actually. I'd spoken to Sarah Irland, the next day, when I was over there to take pictures, she was coming out. And she had said she's always understood the lot to be unbuildable and that nothing could happen.
This was, this was a comment that came from the
Yeah, this is, and this is her husband as well.
It came from the video, so if you want to address that during the public hearing, just to address Luke's point, that's, that would be fine. But I understand, you know, you wouldn't be representing the planning board. Just so that Luke understands where that's coming from.
Yeah, no, I think
Sure.
All right, so if you're finished with the presentation, I think we can open, open this up to board questions and then we'll move into public questions and comments after that. So I'll start. I guess my, my first question is the, the desire to keep the building where it's located seems to force you to do something inconsistent with the neighborhood, which is to not have a front door facing Parsonage Street. So I'm, I'm wondering about the decision there and how that factors in, why you wouldn't have just pushed it back ten feet and put the front door there with a porch so it looks like all the other houses on the block.
So every decision that we made up until, or application was made under the assumption, which, you know, was an assumption, that changing as little as possible would be the best outcome, both for the lot, for the neighborhood, for that building that I think is a beautiful building that, you know, you see coming over that hill, and it sits beautifully there, it's sat there for almost a hundred years. I personally am a kind of a history buff, so I like that about it. And so we went about it with the change as little as possible approach. And so had we not taken that approach, we certainly could have tried that. But that was the, that was the strategy we took.
Can I, can I ask a question? Where on the proposed ground floor plan is the front door?
It's next to the coffee table there, to the left of that coffee table, on the middle, right there, yeah.
So it's in the back corner?
It's on the side corner.
So this, the back of the side area?
Yep, that's the front door. It faces Pine Street.
Four feet wide?
I believe so.
It looks like a window to me. I mean, I, I'm not arguing, I'm just
Yeah, it extends up to a window on the second floor. There's the same, there's the same width. But yeah, that's the, that's the front door.
So where the front door is here.
Correct.
I have a question. Sir Luke, did you clarify something in your presentation? During the part where you were citing case law, were you, in doing so, were you disputing the idea that the code requires us to view the two lots, Twenty-One Parsonage and the neighboring lot, as a single lot for zoning purposes?
Yes, I, I think that that's a, in my opinion, that's an inaccurate statement. I think that the lots are separate lots. And for zoning purposes, this lot is non-conforming. So I'm not stating that because of the, because of this provision that, you know, we shouldn't need an area variance, we shouldn't need a, you know, fifty by fifty with, that, we shouldn't need all of those things. What I'm stating is that I don't believe that based on the language in this code, they should be treated as one lot. I don't believe the code says they become one law. I think the code says that they lose their non-conforming status. If they were treated as one lot, I mean, due to that ownership, Thirty-Six Pine Street is also a non-conforming lot and it has no pre-existing status as well. So that's, I mean, if you look at it on that way, and then there is, we can go down the whole of what the provision means to the, the built lot versus the non-built lot. But I don't believe that the language in this code is specific enough in stating that the lots are merged or that they should be treated as one. And that's why I was kind of talking about those particular cases.
But you acknowledge that your proposed lot is substandard and it needs variances in order to build off of it?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we, from the beginning, we've, we've agreed on that.
So I understand the future plans. And having been on the board for a while, I understand also that life happens. And it could come to pass that you, for whatever reason, after you got your variances and after you renovated and wherever the house was going to be, you were forced to sell it. And you could, your attorney would say, yeah, perfectly willing to sell it, the variances run with land. So what I see is a nice cottage, but I also see a target rich environment for variances, variance requests for the next twenty-five years from people coming in and saying, well, you know, it's only one bedroom, I need another bedroom, and I've got a wife and she's out to here, you know, with a, you know, have a baby. And, you know, and not enough closets, and, and this isn't what normal is in the village in terms of number of bedrooms. So, and I think that if I was living in the neighborhood, I would feel like that is a worrisome thing that will go on. That sign, this property is subject to a variance proceeding from ZVA, will be there for the next two decades. So what, what would, how would you respond to that concern that we don't want to start off the neighborhood with knowing that life can happen and we're creating something which could be a worry? You know what I'm saying? It might be acceptable as a small cottage, but as, ZVA, we're human beings, you know? We don't want to say no. And, you know, over time, you get this building creep and you get into a situation where ultimately you don't have something which fits the How would you respond to that? How would you tell us to deal with that?
Well, I mean, I think, I think my response to that would be, you know, up and down that street and around the corner and all the other streets, that's a, that's a real possibility with any house there. That, that, you know, all of these houses are small. And as families grow and people think they need more space, sometimes that, that can be anywhere. You know, you have a lot of these small houses. This particular one, I think it's distinguished from that in that we're not currently seeking, we're seeking the variances, but we're keeping what's there. We're not looking to increase it. We're, we're not looking to, if this were a non, a pre-existing non-conforming lot, we're not looking to increase any of the non-conformity. We're looking to take what is there and continue with that, only make it into a single-family home. Now, I know we are pre-existing non-conform, so, or, you know, I'm sorry, I know we are non-conforming, not pre-existing. But that's the example, you know, we're not looking to increase any of these, these non-conformities and to make, even though if he put it in the middle and could do a larger house, that would, you know, that's a possibility. We're not looking to do any of that. We're, this is a very specific and particular circumstance because there is the existing structure and it's going off the existing structure. So I think, you know, you're not creating a precedent in that standpoint that this, the next homeowner here could say, well, the variance has already been granted, so we should be able to, you know, come out another twenty, ten feet on this side or another five feet here, you know, we've already, that's already been done. And I think that from that standpoint, once the variances are granted, then they would be seeking to increase any non-conformity. We certainly have a lot of, a lot of ability to manage that.
Let me follow up on that question, with a question to John. Matt suggested at the planning board review that further development or changes of size or addition of an accessory structure could be limited by a site plan, through the plan, on the site plan through the planning board. Is that the case?
I mean, if you were to approve it, you can make a condition that it can't be further expanded. You can make them file a restriction, like a deed restriction, that they can't expand the existing footprint any further if you're worried about, you know, additional variances down the road to bump it out here, bump it out there.
We could do that?
Yes.
And could that also include the height of the building? They're only making one and a half stories, but they could go to two and a half. I mean, if, potentially, if they were to get there.
Yeah, so I would do it as a deed restriction, so that way it's in the chain of title. And that way everybody knows subsequent purchasers put on notice that there's severe limitations.
Okay.
Somebody, I guess, down the road may try to lift those restrictions, bring some type of court action. I think as long as you're on notice.
And that's always the case, though, isn't it?
Yes.
Notice is the most important thing.
Yes.
So in other words, by deed restriction, they would be prevented from coming to the ZVA and asking for their warrants?
Well, yeah.
They're not prevented, but
You can't prevent them
It's a hard argument.
Yeah, that's the thing, I mean, you can't
I'm not here to say that because of what you've been saying, though.
Right, I mean, you can't really prevent them, the subsequent purchaser, from coming, coming to the ZVA and asking for the variances. But certainly if you have the recorded restrictions on record, it's a much easier no.
Right, because it's important, yeah, because you could say, you knew.
Yeah, I mean, everybody gets a title report when they buy a property, so. But you can't say you can never come back to the ZVA and request an area. I mean, you could say it, but that would be difficult to enforce. They have a procedural due process right. I mean, they could agree to it, but the next person could probably challenge it.
But that would run, it would run with the land, just as a variance would.
Yeah, the variances would run with the land, but if you put them, a lot of times if you buy a single-family home, you're not going to look to see what variances, what planning board and ZVA approvals are on the property. So that's why I would suggest if you would do, if you wanted to do restrictions, they should be like a recorded declaration in the chain of title, because that's what people will check the chain of title when they buy the home. They won't go to the clerk's office to see, oh, what, are there any variances on this property? What's, what's the site plan? You'll do it with a commercial property, or you should do it with a commercial property. But people don't do that with residential homes.
I don't want to interrupt, but I've got another question.
And the last thing, can I ask real quick? Would that be more of a planning issue to throw something on it, or it'd be just as much of a ZVA?
You guys are making this determination or decisions, or you've set whatever conditions are reasonably related to, to if, to what you're approving, if you decide to approve it, that's a big if. So it would be part of your condition of approval if, if you go there. Did you have any other questions?
Yeah, I want to, I want to hear about the parking space a little more. I think that, I mean, from my perspective, if I were at Thirty-Six, I would rather have you parking in the street than having a car in the, in the yard. And I know that the, you're trying to reduce the variances by having a spot in the yard. But I wonder if, if that, I mean, did you talk to the neighbors about that? What's the thought of that? Would they rather, if they have to have this, would they rather not hear that? And we can hear from, hear from them also soon.
Yeah, I, since the owner of Thirty-Six is here, I would, I would rather turn that over to him. The initial thought with, with this process, when we met at the first workshop, was to not have a parking spot there because of the proximity to Thirty-Six. And that's, you know, that is a consideration, but there was a lot of, when we met with the planning board as well, there was a lot of talk about parking throughout the village, and, you know, I'm very aware of that. The times I've driven up and down that street, it doesn't seem, you know, it's not an overwhelming parking situation. I haven't done a sort of, you know, official review, but in the winter, that's obviously a in the winter, that's obviously a concern to... That there is no street parking. So to have one, ultimately to have one on the property would be a benefit, I think. You know, whether it's used regularly or not is a different story. But certainly, you know...
And indirectly, with regards to variances, particularly front yard variance, the front of the house currently, would there be windows? I've looked at some of your diagrams. I'm not sure what the complete plan is. Is the staircase to run along the front portion of the house internally? The internal staircase? And are there those vertical windows on either side of it? Just so it doesn't... If it were to be left very close to the sidewalk, you know, that it wouldn't be just a side wall to a house. I mean, I'm just thinking about the character, when you think about the character of the neighborhood, or, you know, allowing a building to be so close, the aesthetic sort of comes in a little bit.
Absolutely.
Even though in the end, it's an HTRB. But it does factor in, I think, a little bit with variances.
I agree with you. I think that's a lot of... From my standpoint, that's a lot of what's important here, is the aesthetic of the community. It's a lot of what we're considering. And that's what zoning is all about, right? It's to create a uniform plan for the community so that it looks a certain way, it acts a certain way. And I do think that this is consistent with that. Your point of having a bare, you know, a bare side certainly wouldn't be consistent with our...
So this is the front elevation. That's the facing the street?
Correct.
All right. And so the stair, these are the side windows? They're in there?
Correct.
And then the stairs running up, I guess, this way?
Correct.
Right. What is this?
Those are the shutters that close to make the front of the building look like it looks now. It's privacy and aesthetic. So you can close those shutters so that you have an entirely vertical slatted front of house, which is what is there currently. It's a... It was, again, to our initial approach, we wanted to make as little changes as possible.
So in other words, the red is the shutter?
No, that's a...
And it hinges?
Can I draw? Do you mind if I...
Yeah, you're not drawing.
The shutter would go like that. This is just a support.
Oh, full, full, two...
Is the shutter interior or exterior? Exterior. And they're hinged, and so you just close it over like that.
Okay, I see.
And there's one on each side.
So basically, from the first floor to the second floor, sort of closed over the window, right?
One large on each side.
So when would you have these shutters closed?
It'd be the discretion of whoever's inside the house, so if they felt like it's privacy. I mean, you have small cracks in between the slats that let light in, you know, but if they want the privacy...
How difficult is it to really... Just out of curiosity.
My architect tells me it's simple, but I have to make sure the builder follows the...
The shutters are on the outside, so to shut them, you can come outside and shut them and go back in. Okay.
When did you buy the property?
Last summer, last...
So if there's a skunk or an animal problem there, then it's already your responsibility, right? So you're working on that since you bought it up?
Always. And mitigating some weed trees as well.
Some what?
Some weed trees, yeah. There's some trees that have taken over the property that need to come down.
Maybe you could come and take care of the skunk that's on my front porch.
I just had a quick question about the site plan. I just want to make sure I understand what's happening on the periphery of the property. There's... It looks like there's a patio that's coming onto your property with some not legal pressure. There's like a... On the property line, there's like a patio, it's in a garden across from the property line. I don't have a site plan with the parking space on it. Does that overlap what you have? Or is that remain?
No, the patio encroaches... I don't even know if, about a foot maybe, but the parking spot comes in six feet from there.
Okay, so it remains in this...
Yes, that remains. It's actually a stone wall the neighbors, and it's part of their access.
The stone wall and this patio, or part of the neighbors?
The stone wall here.
There's a stone wall here.
That's correct.
And then this is a patio that's coming.
That patio... No, that's a part of... That's just the parking. There is a little area that comes over there, but it's... There's not a full patio that comes out like that.
Okay.
And the wall there is really only about a foot and a half high? Is that right? And it's only the front part of the... Any other questions from the board? We can, of course, always ask more questions in the future. But I'd like to give the public a chance to talk before we move on. Anything else? Would the public like to come up and take a look before we jump in or just jump right in? All right, so please come up one at a time, state your name, and look at Michael over there in the camera. You can sit down for a moment.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for being on this board, because this is an easy ask here tonight. I know it's a complicated one. I have a number of questions and concerns. Yeah, one, I was wondering if, Luke, if you could, could you reread the merger clause or provision, whatever that was in there?
Sure.
There was this one word on there that was pretty short.
A lot in any district that was under separate ownership from all adjoining lots on the effective date of this chapter, and which has a total lot area, lot width, or lot depth less than otherwise required herein, may be used and developed in conformity with all of the applicable regulations in its district, subject to grant of site approval.
Was I thought... I thought there was something about the original owner or being different owners?
It just says, "A lot in any district that was under separate ownership."
That was under separate?
From all adjoining lots on the effective date.
So this one was under the same ownership? Does that have any...
Correct. So they're not entitled to these protections or these grant... The grandfather protections?
Right.
They're not entitled to it because they... Their lot is owned by the same person that owned and adjoining lot.
But the merger, the word merger, is there another word that's used in these? I mean, what's the word that's used in the, you know, in the legal, you know, works here? What's on there? Does it say?
No, it doesn't. And again, it's probably my fault for...
So you're the only one that used that word to start this whole thing?
Only the attorneys, yes. The attorneys use this merger clause.
I thought there might have been a clause or something in the law that actually said the word merger.
No, a lot of times, if you search a lot of codes, some codes... A lot of codes have a provision just like this, where they address substandard lots, pre-existing substandard lots, where the ownership of adjoining lots are by the same person. Sometimes, every once in a while, you will see a merger, you know, they'll throw the word, the M-word in there. A lot of times, they don't. So I apologize for that.
I thought that was... That you were just saying that merger really didn't mean it. I'm clear. No need to further explain. I just, this is in no particular order. I kind of ran out of space here and dropped the top. One is John Martin's point on the distance of the sidewalk. I think that is a concern. I think it should be something you guys should look at, and I think it is serious. It's not, you know, that neighborhood. It's not like most neighborhoods around. Maybe May Tree might be different, Luke's house, for example. But like in these areas, there aren't houses built right on the sidewalk like this one would be. So I think that should be concerned, and I don't think it's, you know, any small part. I was wondering how many number of houses, when Luke's talking about, I hope you don't mind me calling you Luke.
No.
I've known Luke for quite a while. So calling him mister, actually, I feel a little... I don't know. Anyway, no disrespect. The number of the houses, I mean, we're talking about how this would fit in and the number of houses and comparing it to other houses. But I was wondering, in this situation, we have a house, it's been there, or two pieces of property that have been there for a long time. And the backyard is, and the back door, and usually where you're looking out, if you're in a house, is actually, is a little bit unusual because you're looking at someone's side yard and you're going to be looking at someone's building. So I think there is a difference there when you're comparing other lots. There might be a lot that have short, smaller side lots, might be a few feet, maybe three feet, nonconforming, whatever. But in this situation, the person that owns that property will now be looking at a residence. I mean, if the barn stays exactly the same, maybe that it doesn't matter, but I think that should be considered that, you know, it is unlike a lot of the other lots because of the situation from backyard facing sidewalk. The other, another thing John had said, you could conditionally approve this. Would that also, could you include that it would not be able to be used as an Airbnb? And it could only be used as a residence? One of the concerns that I've heard a number of times is that, you know, first, this was going to be a nice little house for, you know, the applicant, and then their in-laws. And now, you know, and there's concerns that it might go beyond that. Or if someone else buys the house, as someone suggested, in another year or two, that, you know, it is an Airbnb and that's a concern. It's not supposed to be an Airbnb because of our laws right now, but there are people that have Airbnbs, and maybe, you know, I think that's a concern. So can there be a restriction on that or, you know, conditioned on that?
It could be drafted such that when other people have Airbnbs, I would imagine there's usually a primary residence there, and there might be an offshoot room or something. But in this case, you'd be distinguishing it by saying, the person who's coming in there would be just using the entire premises.
Right.
And, you know, it'd be, that'd be one way of definitely precluding it. I don't know the full law here, you know, in Cole Spring on the Airbnbs, but we would look at that.
But I think there are other Airbnbs in town that are just a total, the whole, total residence or people move out. So it's not just an accessory apartment or something that's being used.
Does the village have specific regulations on Airbnb?
A permit is required for an Airbnb in the Arlen District. Nobody has one, as far as I know. The proposed code change is going to eliminate Airbnbs, I think, for for non-residential homes, but make it easier for you if it is your primary residence.
And the other thing is the permit would only last for a year, I believe, right? It would have to be re-applied for each year?
I don't know, because nobody's ever gotten one, so...
But the question is, can it be a restriction that's put on there?
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's a point you're making.
You could. I guess my concern is would the next owner try to challenge that restriction as some type of... As unconstitutional? I don't know. I mean, it sounds like they would agree to it. I guess I would have to do a little more research as far as...
Would that be another item that could potentially run with the land that has to be put on a deed and recorded?
Yes, that would help, but again, somebody could try to lift that restriction up.
But they could always try it.
Yes.
Okay. Just asking, I think, if it can be, and it gets down, gets to that point, I think that should be a consideration for the group. One kind of disturbing thing is when we talk about historic fabric, to me, and being a contractor for 40 years, you know, I look at that barn and it has historical significance, I guess. It is just a barn. We've had so wonderful it is, how it's setting. The setting is something that attracted to you, that, you know, that was attractive to you and you'd like to keep it that way. But, you know, from a contractor's standpoint, I don't understand how, I mean, I don't see that thing being saved. I don't see how you're lifting something that doesn't have a foundation now or floor joists or whatever to keep that structurally sound enough to move so you could put a foundation under it. So when we're talking about the historic fabric, I'm not sure what historic fabric's actually going to be left of that and why we should even, you know, be talking about historic fabric when it's actually going to be, in my opinion, I think that it'll turn out to be a new building, pretty much. I mean, it might resemble that one, it might be the same shape, but, you know, as far as historic goes, you know, I don't, you know, I'd question, I'd question that.
Well, the HTRB might, if it got to the HTRB, they might say, "You have to reuse this wood somehow." I think that's, but that's not on the zoning board.
Just wanted to bring that up. One thing I just wanted to clarify for everyone is, the owners were aware of it when they purchased this, that this was not an easy piece of property? I mean, is that true?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it was a challenge?
Absolutely. Before we entered into, or Sam entered into the contract, we did go and see with Greg Warner, talked about what was needed. There was a, how was it, was there, or talked about to the water department as well. You may have actually walked in while we were talking, because there was some meeting going on right after. That's why everybody happened to be there. And we did understand that it would be a challenge.
And that it was denied at one point by the building inspector?
It was denied. It was denied at one point by the building inspector, but again, that was anticipated that variances would be needed here. So...
I just wanted to know if you understood.
I, we did understand that, but it had never been denied by a board.
Right, okay. I guess my last, my last comment is, you know, I understand, you know, the owners' rights, and I think that's very important. And I also, you know, you know, being a resident of the mayor of the village, I think it's important, you know, why codes were established. And the reason why codes were established were basically to prevent exactly what this application is for. The ZVA, on the other hand, was formed and created to find relief in instances like this. But this seems to be like a bridge too far. It seems to be not one variance. We're not asking for one variance. We're asking for several, well, seven variance, six or seven variances, you know, including lot size, setbacks, parking. So we're basically asking to just kind of like, you know, to just put the zone, the code aside, you know, and the reason for the formation of the code, in my opinion. I think the code was set up to make lots more, you know, more livable in this day and age, that they weren't going to be very small, they weren't going to be close together regardless of the village. Because if they took all that into consideration when they were making the code, they wouldn't have created the code the way it is. Because all, like you stated, there are a lot of properties that are of small lots. I live on a very small lot or whatever, but I think the reason for the codes were to prevent that from happening. And in this case, not just one, but several, you know, codes were asking to, you know, to put variances on. And, you know, and that's concerning to me because I really don't understand why we would have a ZVA after this. And if this is all approved, because no matter what property they had, they could basically ask for anything and use this as a precedent. And why wouldn't you be able to build on it? And why, why do we have codes and why do we have people up there enforcing it?
Right. And the code was recognizing the issue of due process where there were two separate owners of the small lot when it came into effect. And therefore, it said they would be somewhat accepted, whereas the term merger's been coming up. But the notion is, is if they were still a single owner at the time it came into effect, that it would be a lot more complicated. It would be viewed as a single lot in some way, you know? I mean, it's, they're two separate lots technically, but the code looks at it differently whether separate owners owned it or a single owner owned it and then subsequently transferred it.
John, I want to address that question of the... Dave Morandi, I did not announce his name before the camera, said that there might be a precedent if we grant these variances.